If you'd like to share this, we're gonna be live streaming this, of course. My name is Costa Dardula. I'm one half of the hosts of a little independent show called The Combo Couch. And I want to thank you all for coming out and supporting... Kenneth Mahia, come on up over here. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a long campaign. The man's been working hard. There's a poll in the blue corner. The neo-blue corner, where's he at? Well, what we're gonna do is we're gonna get started if Mr. Gomez shows up and he'd like to sit down with us over here and talk a little bit about the issues, you know, we would really appreciate it, we'll bring him on up here. But until then, we're gonna get started, we'll talk a little bit with Kenneth Mahia over here. You have your microphone right over there, Kenneth? Yeah. So why don't you introduce yourself real quick and tell us what you're doing?
Hello, everybody, can you hear me? Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Kenneth Mahia, and, thanks. I am a 27-year-old independent Green candidate running for United States Congress here in LA. We are youngest and also the first third party to make it this far in the general election. So, there's a lot riding coming up in the next 18. But a little bit about me, I was born in a South Filipino town where my parents moved here from the Philippines. I was raised by a single mom. And the reason why I'm running for Congress is because I believe that it should be integrity, compassion, and courage from our elected officials to the right. And I'm really excited to be here and I thank you all for coming and I hope you guys have great questions to ask about me. I also work full-time, I work 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day. So I came straight here from work. And our team, I couldn't, I couldn't, I made it this far without our team. Because we're students, workers, immigrants, even undocumented or retired or not. So, so thank you, everyone, for being here and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Have a question over there. So tell me, this time around, why run as a Green?
Did you guys hear the question?
Why run as a Green, Kenneth?
So, the question was, why run as a Green Party candidate? I get that question a lot. My whole life, I was a... 2016 happened. A candidate Bernie Sanders, who was fighting for things like single-payer healthcare, tuition-free public college, fighting for things like more affordable housing, and my life, I, you know, I thought vote blue, because that's the only way. And I saw the debacle that happened, on how there was collusion, and being a Democrat my whole life, I figured there needs to be another option. A party that doesn't take corporate money, a party that fights for the same rights, like housing, healthcare, and education as human rights. And that's sort of how I found the Greens. And where, I never heard about them until 2016, but they are a global party. They're in Germany, and in Korea, and in Britain, and they actually do a lot of good there, because they stand for things, 100% renewable energy, make that you all have the right to healthcare and housing and whatnot. So, I turned Green in 2016 because I wanted to feel part of a party's values.
I'll come around so you can stand here and you can rest. So, let me ask you a question, you're out there canvassing right now, you knock on somebody's door and they say, "Hey, I'm a Republican, but I don't want to vote for Mr. Gomez. What should I do?" What are you...
Good question. So, this district is a majority Democratic district, and about 50%, 60, 70% Democrat, and then 20% to 30% Independent, and the rest, 10% or even less are Republicans. And when we talk to voters, we don't just go for Democrats or Independents or Greens, we also go to Republicans as well. And I think many of the issues that you stand, right, much so conservative, traditional values, and what we try to do is, we try to connect with them on the areas that we can agree on. And we know we're all not gonna agree on everything, right? And certain parts, I do agree, is we believe that we should increase things like Social Security, you know? That's not just a red issue, that is a people issue. Many Republicans are tired of seeing their Social Security get either... It's away, it's only $700. Exactly. So, we also talk about things like Medicare for All, because Republicans are very, uh, they want healthcare to be, uh, you know, they support it too, but they also want to make sure that it's protected as well. And also things like lowering federal taxes, that's actually a big part of our goal, and as you know, Republicans are for cutting taxes. Uh, we don't want to cut it for the rich, right? We want to cut it for lower to middle income classes, because many of us here pay 20, 30% average and don't see any outcome out of it. So, that, uh, those are the issues that we connect on, things that we can agree on, and many of them, uh, they put like, "Okay, well, I know who your candidate is and I see your fire, and we may not agree on everything, but, uh, it's good enough." And so, that's sort of the intent.
Well, what are the people over here, they say, "Listen, Kenneth, you're crazy. If we vote for you and you get in, there's gonna be nothing but Democrats and Republicans in the swamp. How do you expect to get anything done there?"
Good question. Um, so the question was, how can we get anything done if I'll be the only candidate when there's all Republicans and Democrats? And I get that question a lot too, because they're gonna be like, "Oh, you go after both parties so hard." But what we would do is, most of the time, we would only caucus, of course, with the Democratic Party most of the time. But what I tell people is that any politician or representative that damn people, if a Republican wanted to pass single-payer Medicare for All, I'm gonna sign on to that. And if that wanted to cancel student debt, I would sign on to that. If a Republican said, "I want corporate money out of politics," I'm gonna stand for that. And so, of course, I know many of our ideals, the Green, I think, I'm fighting, I might not get a lot of traction, but there are, there are some people already in office, like Tulsi Gabbard, who is fighting for 100% clean renewable energy. There are people like Ro Khanna, who's fighting for ranked choice voting and proportional participation. And so, we could work with those that we can already, and then also fish people to the left. And I think having an outsider Independent Party, uh, person in Congress can really push people to have new... It's back to the thing, you gotta do is the dialogue, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Healthcare, why don't you elaborate a little bit more on healthcare and where your stance is? But then more importantly, how you plan to implement it to get it done?
Right. Uh, so the question was on healthcare. Us Greens and our campaign, we believe in guaranteed healthcare, a single-payer Medicare for All system. So, right now, Medicare, it already, uh, many, raise your hand if you have Medicare? Right? It's, it's the most liked system right now in America. Over 60% right of vote Republicans and Democrats support it. And a single-payer Medicare for All system would basically cut out the health insurance companies. Raise your hand if you're paying a monthly premiums. Raise your hand if you have a high deductible. Raise your hand if you have to pay these extremely high copays, right? And raise your hand if you believe healthcare is a human right. And that's sort of what we, we stand for. Basically, a non-profit public entity that can handle all the payments for your medical bill. So you could still see the doctor you want to see, but you have to... For Cigna, or UnitedHealth, or Etna to approve your treatment. You could get the treatment you want, you could get the prescription drugs you need, and basically, it's covered by, uh, the government. So we would just expand Medicare right now, uh, to basically everyone else 65 and below, because we believe healthcare is a human right.
How plan to get some movement in Congress to get the ball rolling?
So, I think there's about 110 Congress members who are part of the Medicare for All Caucus. And I think what we really gotta do is, there's a lot of anti-single-payer propaganda going out, saying, "It'll cost so much, this, there's no way to pay for it." And I think one thing that I am very lucky to have is, I'm a CPA, I'm an accountant. Oh, last, for Bernie Sanders, I broke out a cost-benefit analysis on, um, regular, so people would come to me and ask me, "Kenneth, I pay, I make $50,000 a year. How much will I save in Bernie Sanders' single-payer plan?" And I said, "Okay, if you make $50,000 a year, multiply 2%," because that was his bill. You pay 2% a year, you're getting healthcare for the rest of your life. And then, she's like, "Okay, so 2% of $50,000, what is that, $1,000 bucks, right?" And then I said, "Okay, how much do you pay in your monthly premiums?" And she's like, "Oh, I pay $100 a paycheck." So, I was like, "Okay, so you pay $200 a month." And she's like, "Yes." So I'm like, "You see here, you're paying $1,000 for..." You're gonna pay $2,400 on your monthly, in a year, on your premiums." And then she said, "Oh my God, I didn't know that." So I think you gotta really sit down with people and show them how much you'll save and how much you're paying out to get the healthcare. Because right now, uh, in America, we spend $10 per person on healthcare. And, uh, I know many of you can attest to experiences you had, there's, on whether you get denied for treatment, or you get a big bill that you didn't even know that you had to pay. And I think sort of what we do is, I would go in there in Congress and I would show people how much it would cost and how much they, because just saying healthcare is a human right is not good enough. You actually have to show the breakdown, and I think that's one thing about being a CPA that I could do.
What are the... With Meaty Hut, to make room for healthcare?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, there's a, in terms of, uh, I mean, there's... Right now, we just gave a $2 trillion tax cut to the rich. You know, that's a lot of money, right? Things like corporate subsidies, things like tax breaks, that we use our military spending closer to $1 trillion. Are areas that we can basically, you know, real... I think what a lot of people is, they don't, when they get $1 trillion, they don't really personalize it, they don't humanize it, they don't really see it happen. But, um, you know, those are really big, that we're spending our money on, on the right places, you know? We're at war at seven different countries. No one's attacking us. You know, why don't we go against cancer, or with the health insurance companies, or the people that are ripping us off? So, military spending, cutting, cutting the tax breaks off of Wall Street, and, you know, ensuring that there is enough, uh, federal, you know, through the Fed, to ensure that we do have guaranteed, uh, single payer, so.
It's awesome. Give him a round of applause for that. Cut that military budget. All right, let's talk about another area, because I've been out and about, and one thing I love about Kenneth Mahia is that I see you out, I love the activists. I see you when strikes, I see you out there for the homeless. We have a huge, huge homeless problem. I think it's close to 60,000 homeless in LA. Your plans to solve this problem?
Right? So, there's about, close to 60,000 people and children who are homeless in LA County. And it's sad, because we are the richest nation on earth, and we have over 60,000 nationwide who are homeless, and we have 10% here in LA. And for us, we would enact, basically, as we said before, we believe housing is a human right, we put more funding for emergency shelter. Shelter, good enough. They need, uh, supportive housing, so we put more funds for supportive... And that, there's many buildings here, around this art district, right next to us is actually Skid Row. It's the largest concentration of homelessness, with 10,000 people right here. And we would build not only emergency shelters, but supportive housing, mental health facilities where people go, get the treatment that they need, that they're not gonna lie. Mental health, unfortunately, police and LAPD sometimes accidentally kill people who are homeless, because they're having a mental, uh, and that's one thing we do, is not look at homelessness, mental health, or even drug abuse as a criminal activity, but as a, as a health issue. And I think that's what we push for, so housing and health services for the homeless, to ensure that they have...
That's awesome. I think the biggest battle is the battle, all this money spent on Prop 10. What is your stance on Prop 10?
Does everyone know what Prop 10 is? So, Proposition 10 is a statewide ballot in California, and what it will do is, it will repeal the Costa-Hawkins Act. And, right, the Costa-Hawkins Act was created in 1995. And essentially, what that act does right now is, if you live in an apartment built after 1995, the landlord can raise your rent by 80% because it... Rent law for apartment buildings built after 1995. So, raise your hand if you ever got a 10%, 20% increase, or you had to move, right? There are people here raising your hand. And LA, the average rent for a one-bedroom now, for new apartments, are $2,000 for like a small studio, or a $400, $500 one-bedroom. And so, that repeal would help cities have the power to enact control, uh, to buildings built before 1995. Wouldn't that be awesome, right? But unfortunately, in Los Angeles, it's actually, the stabilization ordinance is 1978. So, in California, it's 1995, but if your apartment was built after 1998, in LA, they could raise your rent by 3,000%. And you have to go and you have to get displaced. And that's what we're seeing with our immigrant communities, communities of color, low-income families, that median income in our district is less than $40,000. And that's for households, so these are people with families, people who have children. And so, I'm for Prop 10, if we need the old Costa-Hawkins, and have cities have the power to enact rent control. Because cities like Richmond, they have rent control, and in places like Santa Monica, they have rent control, but how come we can't have rent control in LA? So, I believe housing is a human right, and I believe people shouldn't get displaced because they can't afford rent increases. Awesome, awesome.
Well, while we're on the props, why don't we talk about Charter Amendment B? Does everybody know what that is? Public Banking? Do you have thoughts on Amendment B?
Yeah. So, Charter Amendment B, we're in LA, we use private financial institutions to hold our, our money. What is it, Wells Fargo, Bank of America? And we basically want to give cities to create a public financial institution that has our money. Because right now, these Wells Fargos, these Bank of America, they charge the city inch, like 3%, 4%. And these are our dollars, these are our tax dollars, our city dollars that we pay. Why, exactly. Why not have a financial public institution that goes straight to the people? And so, get rid of Wall Street, get rid of the big banks, and I'm for Charter Measure B, because I believe that the money should be in the hands of the people, just like how our credit union is. Definitely for it.
Charter Measure, sorry, I said Amendment, my bad. Money out of politics, we'll go stay on this. Okay, so, what is your stance on public campaign financing?
What is the stance on public campaign financing? I believe that Citizens United should be repealed. I believe that big money and politics has nowhere, no place, politics at all. That is probably a single role of many of our social inequalities that we have here in terms of income and class. And I believe that we should have campaign financing, where candidates are financed, say, with a set amount. Jimmy Gomez, our opponent, raised $1 million, and we raised over 100,000 in small donations. But we don't have that, we don't have that money to compete with the big dogs. And so, we're definitely for getting big money out of politics, having campaign financing. Hell, if it was up to me, I'd have no money at all in politics, and just have the candidates go out there and talk with the people like they did back in the day. Knock on doors, have a grassroots team, because, uh, that's, I truly believe grassroots is the way that we could get back to a country where the people are in charge and not the corporations.
Do you believe we should audit the Fed?
What happened?
Do you believe we should audit the Fed?
Yeah. I mean, I think we should audit the Federal Reserve. I mean, a lot of this thing on the, I'll go, uh, Wall Street tax cuts, or Wall Street bailouts, or things like military spending, uh... Criminal, exactly, exactly. A lot of, a lot of the spending we do from the Fed isn't being spent on the right place, and so...
Do you have a stance on MMT?
I don't think I...
We don't, we don't need to get down the rabbit hole on that, it's the way that... What about foreign affairs? Do you have a stance on Russia? All the talk about Russia, I know Jill Stein, at Q, times, and it's still going online. Do you have any thoughts on that whatsoever?
So, the question was on, on foreign affairs, like Russia. So, you know, it's unfortunate. I believe that if you're Russian, I believe you're gonna be attacked in America, it's a sad place we live in. But, uh, you know, I, I really don't have, like, anything on Russia. You know, if, if they are proven to be into our electoral process, then by all means, they should be held to account, right? But until we find that hard proof that they actually did, and, uh, then for sure, definitely there should be some...
All right. Well, let's go to the awesome questions. My man, did you have a question back over there you want to ask? Yes, sir. Would you mind coming up here real quick for the question? What's your name?
Hi, I'm Nick. Thanks for letting me ask a question. I know we're kind of all on the same page about homelessness. I know we're all saying homelessness, I love where you're at on it, but I think the mission, given the Congress you're likely to serve in, is that you have to convince Republicans of all of this. How are you gonna do that?
So, just homelessness or everything, like our bold mission in general?
Let's, if we're gonna make it specific, like, how do we get federal dollars allocated to homelessness, which is clearly a problem with national causes as much as local?
That's a good question. So how do we get Republicans to put more funding nationally to things like, like homelessness, right?
And Democrats.
Democrats. I believe that what we gotta do is, we have to sort of come to a consensus that homelessness isn't in that, we have to. And I think once we sort of get to that consensus that we all believe, as Republicans and as Democrats, that we together, that we need to end homelessness, then we move. I think a lot right now, there's, uh, even here in our city, in our neighborhoods, there, the communities out there, basically against the homeless, there's in Villa Town, or in Venice, and whatnot, and basically in Sherman Oaks. And I think what we gotta prioritize is that, number one, it starts with each and every one of us individually, to realize that homeless people are human beings. They're not just sons that pass, they're their son, they're someone's daughter, or whatnot. And once we come to that conclusion, then we could start talking about, okay, well, how can we help these people? And I think a lot of, in the national level, there's issues about where we can do it, where are we gonna get the money? And, and that's sort of where I come in. And you asked a question about MMT, which is, uh, Modern Monetary Theory. And what I want you all to know, I'm gonna like drop a little, uh, like, knowledge right now, uh, on our financing system. And so, it's a fun things like homelessness, because they're gonna ask, "Where are you gonna get the money?" Nationally, we get our funds from the Federal Reserve. And the Federal Reserve has limited dollars essentially to pay for anything. If we wanted to provide homelessness, uh, homeless, we could. If we wanted to provide guaranteed healthcare, we could pay for it using the Federal Reserve, because the state's has the power of the purse. And so, an example of where the Fed isn't using the money is when All-Streets, 21,000 million dollars. And so, what we could do is, when we talk to Republicans, when they say, "Where are we gonna get the money?" We get fed to use the spending on the people that actually need it, on working for families' healthcare, on homeless people living on the street who need health services because they have drug abuse, or they have mental health issues. And so, I think that's sort of where we could sort of get them out of their, uh, out of these Congress people. A lot of, a lot of the drawback is, how are we gonna pay for it? How are we gonna pay for it? And then the second one was what I said earlier, is each, each and every one of us individually has to start humanizing homelessness and the people we see. So it's a two-part movement, because, let's say Congress does pass a bill to house all the homeless, but all of us here are like, "No, we don't want that." Then it's not gonna work. So it's part the movement, and two-part, making sure that it's practical and that people have the resources to make it happen.
All right. We'll do a couple people over here, we'll get to you. Just introduce your name and your question for Ken, your name?
Carolyn Rowley.
All right, here, hold the microphone close up, and ask Ken your question.
This is more, um, we represent sickle cell disease, so this is more of a healthcare issue. Sickle cell disease, uh, in California, it has the 20 in the US, followed by Georgia. And so, people are dying, um, with sickle cell disease. And I need to make, we need to make sure that you're going to support, uh, the Sickle Cell Treatment Act. Um, the bottom line is that the majority of people live in California with sickle cell disease, and the problem is that the providers don't have knowledge. So therefore, people going to the hospital, and, um, they're dying in the hospital. We need to, we need to make sure that you support the Sickle Cell Treatment Act, um, that's already with Congress, um, as well as within California. Any effort that we're putting together to be able to protect patients with sickle cell. So, may I just explain what that is, in case you don't know? Sickle cell disease is a red blood cell disease. It's not just affecting African-Americans, it affects who are Hispanic-Americans, if you're from Southeast Asia, if you're from South America, if you're from... You can have sickle cell disease. So it's, it's actually more global, and so, that's who we represent.
Thank you for the question, and 100% I'd be for, for the Sickle Cell Treatment Act. And I believe that there should be enough funds for research, and basically enough health facilities to help, you know, patients who have sickle cell, and so I'd definitely be for it.
In California, there's only one comprehensive center, and that's in Oakland, where the majority of the people who have sickle cell disease live in Southern California. So, that's a problem right there. The other thing is, you mentioned, you talked about homelessness, many of the people with sickle cell disease are in SS, and they don't, and they have to come, and they're living in their car, and they have access to, um, adequate, um, healthcare. So this is actually a problem right now, affecting many, uh, where people are dying.
I mean, it's definitely a sad reality, whether it's sickle cell anemia, or you have HIV, people are dying because they can't get the care they need, people go bankrupt into homelessness, like she mentioned, and, you know, I believe that is the fault of our elected officials not pushing hard enough to ensure that you have the right to life and... to ensure that you have the right to life, no matter the disease you have. And you shouldn't be determined by the amount of income, or where you are geographically. The fact that the only sickle cell anemia center is in Oakland is, is ridiculous. And in Congress, and even today, thank you for getting me on it, definitely I'd be there to support and ensure this happens. Make sure that there's a voice in Congress who will push on this issue. I'll do that. Thank you.
How you doing, Ken? Uh, my name is Ken Aswell. And, uh, I also live with sickle cell disease. And one of the issues with sickle [inaudible 00:13:00]. It destroys our organs. And I wanted you to speak a little bit about Proposition 8, which deals with dialysis clinics. Because it's something that affects our community in a very serious manner. So if you could just speak a little bit to how you feel about that.
Proposition 8. It's for dialysis, right?
Correct.
So, actually, I got a phone call from the SCIU nurses on Prop 8, telling them to support it. I'm basically for any possibility to take the cost of dialysis treatment low, to ensure that when you do get dialysis, you're not paying an arm or a leg, which is what we're seeing right now from many dialysis treatment centers. And I think there's a lot of propaganda, basically from [inaudible 00:13:59]. That says if it does pass, we will lose business. But, but it, but it's ridiculous, because in California, we subsidize healthcare facilities, hospitals, and dialysis treatments with taxpayer money, for them to charge you $5,000. And I believe that this position, if it does pass, long-term, it will essentially put dialysis treatment in the hands of the public, where you're not paying right now $5,000 for treatment, and you're paying something essentially... And so, you know, we need to rein in on these corporate entities, these private entities, who are privatizing dialysis and charge so much, whether it's for sickle cell or dialysis. So I'm, I'm for Proposition 8, and making sure that you're not charging an arm and a leg. Come on up.
Just tell us your name, and go ahead and ask Ken a question.
Hi, my name is Judy. And I know that [inaudible 00:14:12]. And you can back it up. But Jimmy Gomez also considers himself a progressive. And he talks about helping, uh, strengthening healthcare, strengthening social security. And it even came to the point where he said that he [inaudible 00:14:38]. Uh, pointed directly to his reelection campaign. So how are we going to distinguish who is actually the progressive here?
So the question was, Jimmy Gomez is our opponent, is considered progressive? We're considered progressive? How do we know who's the real progressive, or who's the, or who is the most progressive? Uh, number one, and a lot of people ask me that question. And I could tell you the differences between us, him and, him and us. Number one, we don't take any corporate funding at all. Some of his donors over his political [inaudible 00:15:14]. TCA, they were the largest private prison in California. Of his, our health insurance companies, like, uh, United Health, Amgen, Big Pharma, like [inaudible 00:15:38]. He took money from the largest student debt collector. Raise your hand if you're still paying off your loans. He got, he got money from the largest student debt collector, Navient. So that's one. We don't take any corporate [inaudible 00:16:01]. So we do not have to pay anybody back when they're in office. Number two, even though he sponsors things like single payer Medicare for All, or tuition-free public college, you have to remember point one. It's like, how can you sponsor guaranteed healthcare when you're taking money from Big Pharma or health insurance companies who are against guaranteed healthcare? And then number three, we are pushing for even more bold progressive legislation. Like making sure that ICE is out of our immigrant communities. Making sure that, making sure that we close all private prisons. Making sure that we cancel student debt. Like, no one has ever pushed that. And so, those are ways that we differentiate ourselves, is who we get our money from, and what we're actually pushing. And I think being an independent, green candidate, I'm not beholden to a party. I'm beholden to you, to you all. And I think, uh, that's sort of where we differ, so.
And invite, all right. Hi, uh, my name is Dave. Uh, and I guess my question is, so first past the post voting is a big reason we have the [inaudible 00:16:21]. And I wanted to know, what is your plan to switch our, to help switch our voting system? Like race voting, so the American people don't feel they're wasting their votes when they're voting for the people they actually want to represent them, as opposed to settling for the lesser of two evils?
Right. Good question. So the question was on, uh, basically [inaudible 00:16:35]. Right now in California, you have to place in the top two spots in the [inaudible 00:16:43]. To get this far. Luckily for us, we were able to beat all the other candidates to be here. Normally in LA, and in California, it's mostly a Democrat versus a Democrat. And many people who I talked to, they're afraid to vote green, or [inaudible 00:17:01]. Because they're afraid to, like, the Republican, right? But what he was mentioning about pushing ranked choice voting, if we were to have that in place, instead of people getting the majority vote, or a top two, like it is in California, with ranked choice voting, you, there would be no [inaudible 00:17:11]. So what ranked choice voting means is, for example, it's this election. It's me versus Jimmy Gomez versus a Republican. If you vote [inaudible 00:17:22]. What's the worry, right? That I'll take [inaudible 00:17:25]. Away from the crap, and then a Republican gets elected. What ranked choice voting allows is that you could rank your candidates from 1 to 3. So your first choice could be Kenneth Mahia as a Green. Your second choice would be Jimmy Gomez. And your third choice would be the Republican. And what you, essentially, you have is [inaudible 00:17:30]. After the first round of voting, say I get the least amount of votes, and no one has gotten a majority. Your vote with, for me, would then go to Jimmy Gomez, until someone actually reaches 50 plus 1%. So therefore, there would [inaudible 00:17:54]. There would be our tactic in getting Trump elected, or getting a Republican elected. And so, um, I would definitely be for something like ranked choice vote. I think a lot of here would. It's more democratic, and you could vote without having to, to worry about it. America is the only industrialized country that doesn't have multi-parties. And it's, it's a shame, because you're either left with, you know, Democrats or Republicans, but a majority of people are independents. And that's why all [inaudible 00:18:00]. The border is so low. In our district, 20% of voters only voted. And it's because a lot of people don't see any [inaudible 00:18:15]. Changing in [inaudible 00:18:18]. So definitely be for a ranked choice voting system. I'd push for that. There's actually a bill out there right now that would, uh, do that as well, so.
If anybody else has a question, they want to come up? Anybody? Anybody? Well, okay. So let me ask you a question. Last question, we'll wrap this up. Kenneth Mahia gets elected. Day one, what does Kenneth Mahia do?
We're gonna have a green party. I'm just kidding.
Party that's green!
That's good. Nah... Um, if we did get elected, and, uh, I think the first, the first... I, I, I think...
When we get elected?
When we get elected? I believe, uh, you know, I'd want to, who [inaudible 00:18:25]. Alex [inaudible 00:18:28] in New York. Did you guys see that? I basically want, uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna be even bigger, I believe. And what I wanted to do, that if we, is I want to use [inaudible 00:18:31]. In Congress, the fact that we could be in front of the CNNs, the ABCs, MSCs, and use [inaudible 00:18:35]. To expose the truth. Expose that actually a possibility of having things like healthcare, housing, education as human rights. So basically, if we win, I want to use our victory as a super-duper organizing tool to win in neighboring districts around LA. And, uh, because [inaudible 00:19:00]. To take one district at a time, to turn, you know, more progressive and green. So I would organize right away on day one to basically win in every other part around LA, so.
November 6th, let's [inaudible 00:19:11]. Give a round of applause. It's been a long campaign season. Kenneth Mahia, good luck, my friend.
And, uh, we, we have yard signs, and ones and pumper stickers. If you want yard signs, let me know. So thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you, everybody. Hold on, Yosef's coming up. We also like to give a shout-out. Thank you so much for Iron Tryon, for having me today. We'll be next week, same area.
Oh yeah, if you want to get involved, let me know. And, uh, we could get you helping us. We do [inaudible 00:19:21]. Over, over the [inaudible 00:19:23]. On 10 and the 101. Uh, we do, uh, knocking on doors. If you like knocking on doors, we do that in teams. We also make phone banks. And we also write postcards. If you're shy to vote, you can help us write postcards. And then also, next week on the 27th, we're gonna have an independent politics forum, where, uh, other independent candidates from [inaudible 00:20:00]. Districts come speak. Also, community organizers, uh, who will be speaking from the LA Tenants Union on housing. We'll have someone, I believe, from Black Lives Matter. And we'll have, uh, we'll have Dr. Jill Stein, the presidential candidate. She'll be here in LA, Sunday at October 27th at 2, at 2:00 PM. Saturday, October 27th, 2:00 PM. So if you want it, it's right here. So, thank you.
Hey, if you liked our video and want to support independent media, please like, share, and subscribe below.
Yeah, we have a Facebook, a Twitter, a YouTube, and coming soon, fam, we're gonna be on Roku.
Take it easy, fam. And if you have any change to spare, please subscribe to our Patreon below to keep us going.
Yes, anything would help with that.
Thanks again for watching. Combo out.